I'd like to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. Look forward to a good meeting. We will begin our meeting with the invocation by the Reverend Jackie Davis, Senior Pastor at Tabernacle United Methodist Church. Everyone would stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Let us pray. Eternal God of infinite wisdom and eternal grace, we thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us in this city, state, and nation. We thank you for the freedoms we enjoy, and we pray for those who defend these freedoms for us. Please grant them protection and provision wherever they are in this world tonight. Grant the same to our first responders who even now watch over us. Let them all know how grateful we are for their service and that our prayers are with them. Oh Lord, you delight to give wisdom to those who in sincerity ask, and even without finding fault. We gather tonight to ask for your wisdom for all who lead us, not only in this city of Virginia Beach, but also our state and our nation. It is not only our privilege to do this, but it is our responsibility as citizens to lift up daily prayers for those who lead us. You exhort us that requests, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for everyone and for all in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. Please give wisdom to our mayor, to our city council, and to all who administrate the affairs of our city. Grant them wisdom to know what needs to be done and the courage to act with integrity. Help them to work together for the sake of the greater good of the people they serve. Make us good stewards of the resources that have been entrusted to us. To all of us gathered here tonight, grant us your protection and your provision in our daily lives. Help us each to look out for the cause of justice and the good of our neighbor. Remind us that as we serve one another, we really serve you. Make us grateful for what we have and generous in the way that we give. Help us to live with integrity and sincerity. Oh God, now bless this meeting and all who are gathered. Redeem this time to your glory and to our good. By your grace we pray. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming down, Reverend. Really appreciate you being here tonight. You've got the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with motion to recess.
Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of February 20th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minute. That's the minute.
I'd like to read, I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Open a public hearing on the leases of city-owned property cafe franchises.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Open a public hearing on polling place changes.
No speakers.
I will now go to the wonderful Vice Mayor for the consent agenda, and good luck, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions. Item I-1, which is ordinance to grant 13 franchise agreements for open-air cafes in the resort area, A Cabana Cafe, B Shoreline Cafe, C Shoreline Cafe, D H2O Cafe, E Ocean 27 Cafe, F Ocean 27 Cafe, G Hemingway's Restaurant Cafe, H Rockfish Cafe, Cafe, I Oceans 14 Cafe, J Fish Bones Cafe, K Waterman's Cafe, L 204 Pizza Cafe, and M Quad's Cafe. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on 1A, D, E, F, and G.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item I-2, which is ordinance to amend city code, A Section 10-1, Ray Polling Places, 1 Chimney Hill Precinct to Rosemont Elementary School, Tools 2 Split, Rosemont Forest Precinct and establish the Salem Woods Precinct at Parkway Elementary School, 3 Split Sigma Precinct and establish the Sand Bridge Precinct at Tabernacle United Methodist Church, to A Section 23-50, Ray accumulations of trash, garbage, et cetera, or excessive growth of weeds and grass, 3 ordinance to authorize a full-time psychiatrist position and reduce capacity of a part-time psychiatrist position in the Department of Human Services, 4 resolution to appoint Terry A. Chelius as Chief Deputy City Clerk, item 6, which is a resolution regarding the plight of the people of Puerto Rico and the aftermath of Hurricane Maria. Item 7, ordinance to accept and/or appropriate 7B $1,510,769 from surplus regional surface transportation program funding to CIP number 2-152 Elbow Road Extended Phase 2B, C $124,358 in miscellaneous Medicaid revenue to CIP 3-705 Human Services Client Information 2, D $118,698 to the Fire Department, Ray purchase of four utility vehicles and updated emergency medical equipment, E $91,000 to Human Services, Ray complex care program services.
Open a public hearing for planning.
Under planning for consent, first item J-1, which is Thai Properties LLC for variance to Section 4.4C-1 of the subdivision regulations, Ray lot width at 2204 Treasure Island Road. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 2, which is the application of C and C Development Company, Inc., George and Joyce Seco for a variance to Section 4.4C-1 subdivision regulations, Ray lot width and reconfigure two lots at 2606 Arctic Avenue in the Beach District. Madam Clerk, please note that the mayor is abstaining on that item.
Yes, sir.
Item 3, the application of Alba Taxi LLC and Edward Salimaja and Besnick Salama for a conditional use permit, Ray auto repair garage and bulk storage yard at 1208 Bell's Road in the Beach District. Item...
So moved, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion. Do I have any, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
And thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. A couple of housekeeping things. First of all, we want to explain that Jessica's absent because of having a new baby, and we're wishing them a lot of happiness and everyone doing well. Also, we have Boy Scout Troop 14 scouts attending the city council meeting today. George Wazita is the one bringing them, and we have Scout Maxwell Mikowitz, First Class Scout Andrew Musselman, Tenderfoot Scout Jacob Musselman, Second Class Scout Coleman Shepherd, Scout David Steencamp, Scout Jeremiah Sullivan, and Tenderfoot Scout Rhett Wallace. If they could stand, let's recognize them. We're glad to have you here. Any thanks to the volunteers and their leadership over there as well. I will now go to item number 5 under ordinances and resolutions, a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute an interim agreement for project development and operations planning regarding the Sports Center project. We have one speaker on this. I will be abstaining on this. As such, Mr. Jones, I'd ask you to handle item number 5, please.
We actually have two speakers.
Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers?
Yes, two. Barbara Messner is the first speaker, and Diana Howard is the second speaker.
Good evening.
Okay, on the Sports Center, this is basically the Field House, PPEA, Public Education money, that has been renamed, and I think it should have, we should have had public hearings on this, not just a council meeting. We don't have the money. We have 1.2.127, whatever it is, I can't, it's almost 3 billion in debt. You have a D rating from an independent source, Truth and Accounting, and nobody's mentioned since the arena, because this looks like it's going in the arena location. This is the jet crash in noise map. I'm sure you all remember Mayfair Muse and the problems with the jets, the F-18 Super Hornets, they're really in bad shape. So, none of these projects, you know, should be going in that location. I did ask for a conflict ruling to the Commonwealth attorney. I'm surprised I haven't heard anything, so the people, I think, should not be voting because it's a 9-2 supermajority vote. Let's see. Ms. Wilson and Mr. Sessoms have conflicts with Town Bank, the private tourism industry, Berkshire Hathaway Town Real Estate Empire. They take major campaign donations from developers and Town Bank. Mr. Uren works directly in the hotel industry as Director of Operations for Burlage Management. Catherine Sisson-Uren is Sales Director for Bruce Thompson's Cavalier Residence. Councilman Ben Davenport has worked as a broker for Prudential Town Realty. He was the founding chair of Bruce Thompson's Virginia Gentleman Foundation. Five of Bruce Thompson's projects are public-private partnerships with city-owned land and city tax dollars. Ms. Wilson's statement of economic interest, she received $250,000 from her stock with Goodman Dixon Hughes. Ms. Henley's taken money from Town Center developers. Mr. Wood's son is an associate with Wilcox Savage. We hired them twice on the arena deal. And like I said, I'm waiting for conflict rulings. Code 2.23122, knowing violation, you know, constitutes...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
I'd like to say something if you don't mind. I'm no longer with Berkshire Hathaway, and I'm now with Howard Hanna Real Estate, and I don't have stock with Dixon Hughes.
Howard Hanna is under the Berkshire Hathaway...
No, no, it's not. It's not.
Well, that's what they told me.
Ms. Messner, please have a seat.
Okay.
It's not.
Thank you.
Diana Howard?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome. I was at the public hearing at the convention center. I want you to call it that. It was more of an input thing where we all tell you what we want, and so we heard a lot from people that wanted a lot of things added here on the Field House, and one of the things they asked for was attracting. So now the Field House has gone from 40 million to 55 million, right? One of the things that was said at our table, there was a gentleman there that questioned whether the Field House, if it goes over by the convention center, if the people that go there are going to be able to afford the hotels, because they're very expensive down at the oceanfront, and they might go somewhere else in the city. And I know that one of the reasons that you wanted to put it over there by the convention center was to put more, you know, people in hotels down at the oceanfront, so maybe the Doubletree is cheaper. There was a gentleman there from the tourist place, and he was saying how they turn away a lot of business for, they have like the wrestling there, and they have the cheerleaders and stuff like that, and they turn away other things that are more appropriate to go to a Field House or a Sports Center. And I know that the Sports Center that is already, or the Field House that is already privately owned and everything, is full all year round, right? And the people that stay there, you know, for that, they stay in Chesapeake, but we're getting two hotels down there, so maybe they'll stay there for now. But anyway, so apparently there is a big industry for sports and for a Field House. So I'm wondering, why didn't we put this out to bid instead of owning it ourselves? Why didn't we like lease the land there, since the arena's not going to go there? Why didn't we lease the land for a dollar a year and see if somebody privately wanted to build it so we didn't use taxpayer money? Another thing, that thing they said, it's $196 million of debt that we're going to do, or $196 million of money that's going to be coming out of the tip fund to pay for garages, amenities, and I seen today we have now a music venue, right? Et cetera, et cetera. That's a lot of money, you know? If we had, in the CIP, in the 2018 budget, we had the arena, which had over $60 million. Where's that money? Can we use that money for cash and not put that money in debt, because we could use the debt elsewhere? And if we have so much excess money in the tip fund, why can't we just reuse it somewhere else like we did with the light mural money? We use that for something else. That was dedicated money. Why can't we reuse the tip fund for actual needs and not wants?
Time's up. Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
All right. May I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seated. Any discussion on the motion?
There is.
Mr. Martin.
And I want to appreciate Ms. Howard's comments, because I think she does reflect that there is broad-based support in the public for the Field House. That is true. I think she raised a good point about how much of the Field House should be debt, if any, and how much should be cash. That is a debate yet to be had, because I think that that will be a discussion later to have. And yes, you are correct, if we do debt, that is going to take debt capacity away from other things, but I think maybe our debt capacity has been understated by, in the past, by the city manager, and I think a new view is being looked at, and I've had my own discussion with the mayor as we look at that whole process. I think that also means we can be more aggressive about flooding, which everyone knows is my big thing. So I think we can really have more of both. And at this particular stage, it's just about going to negotiate with the person who does a very successful job running the existing Field House operation in that terms. The decision to actually build it and how to finance it is yet to come. So that, just because I vote for this, doesn't mean I'll vote later, but we're on the right track, and I'm very appreciative of the broader look about how we can be also more aggressive with dealing with our stuff for residents as we use the revenues from the tip fund to reduce the amount of debt we have to take on and making that debt available for things for residents. So I think, for the moment, I think it's a right track, but you raised some good points, and I think the council as a whole discussed those very points today.
Anybody else have any comment? If not, the vote's open.
By a vote of nine to zero, with the mayor abstaining, you have approved the resolution.
You did a good job, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you. I now get an ordinance 7A, $1,401,912 surplus congestion mitigation and air quality funding to CIP number 2418 Indian River Road, Kempstall Road Intersection Improvements. That's Barbara Messner, I believe.
Barbara Messner, yes.
Good evening. Yeah, the whole issue, and I'm sorry Mrs. Marsh wasn't, isn't here tonight, because she understands, you know, the finances. I mean, this, when I read it in the agenda, it's slush funds, it's money, all these little places. Why do we have budgets when you keep changing the money and redirecting the money? Basically, $3 million being redirected. Why aren't we redirecting it so we can make sure that we have police that go through training and stay here? Having 80 and 85 officers short two years in a row is unconscionable. You know, if they had more money, if they were treated like the developers and fully funded and give it, you know, not babysitting events, we might be able to keep more of them. But they should also have body cams, and I'm talking about finance, how you do finance. This is the D rating from Truth and Accounting. Virginia Beach has 5,99,8 million in assets to pay, 1.5 billion worth of bills. The outcome is an 874.8 million shortfall and a 5,700 taxpayer burden. Despite reporting most of its pension debt, the city hides all of its retiree... Are you praying, Mr. Sessoms, or just ignoring me? All of its retiree healthcare debt. The city's total hidden debt amounts to 144.8 million. We have assets... Anyway, right there, grade D. Virginia Beach does not have enough money to pay its bills, though it received a D for its financing from Truth and Accounting. A D grade is given to cities with taxpayer burden between 5,000 and 20,000. Y'all certainly way over that. And, you know, it's just a shame that there's only a couple people willing to speak, because most of them know their voices aren't heard. We can speak, but y'all do what the hell you want anyway. Sorry.
Counsel, I think I need to clarify that this city's bond rating by all three bond rating agencies, AAA, which people would die to have that type of rating, because it is very hard to come by, and the information that was just stated does not correlate with the facts.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, Ms. Messner, I'd just like to make a comment about this particular project on Indian River and Kempstall Roads. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, that it was identified as one of the worst intersections in Hampton Roads. The highest congestion in the city is on Indian River Road, right in front of CBN, 104,000 cars a day. And I think of the importance of this room, this road and an intersection that gets backed up, because don't forget it comes down from Farrell Parkway to, to the only exchange on Route 64. It is burdened with traffic. And I think we also get taken to consideration public safety, you know, being able to get efficiently to all parts of the city in a very, you know, efficient manner. It's a matter of life-saving, it's a matter of convenience for one of the most congested roads in the city.
The project, I was thinking on...
We're talking, this discussion, go ahead, please.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, you know, it's an important project.
John?
I just want the public, I mean, I'm a bigger critical critic about spending money that doesn't need to be spent if anybody up here, but our bond prospectus, if anyone looks at it, when we issue debt, that has to meet the standards of the Security Exchange Commission, and I can, and I read those documents, believe it or not, and I can assure you that all our liabilities and assets are disclosed. There isn't anything hidden, and I think because if there were, there'd be lots of people out here looking for us, and it would be the feds. So, now, there's other issues about what those things mean, but no money is hidden from public view. We run a very transparent organization. I just want people to recognize that we don't have these stockpiles or things hidden over here. It's all out there in the open. We can have disagreements about what it means and what we should do about it, but it is, there's no hidden agenda on this body or with the city manager and his staff.
Thank you, Bobby. And John, did you want to say something?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to remind the council that this was audited by the VDOT, and it was reprogrammed money from unused appropriated money, reprogrammed to these projects from the 90s, as a matter of fact.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item 7A.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the ordinance.
Item number four in planning, Crow's Nest Holdings LLC trading as River Beach Brewing Company, Thomas Harbuzell. This was on consent.
Correct. So...
There's just one person that wants to speak. If you could give us a second, I'll let you come up.
Okay.
Okay. Barbara?
Barbara Messner.
My only concern is the breweries are taxpayer subsidized, at least 10,000. I have no idea how much you spent to bring Green Flash here, but that's a taxpayer subsidy, subsidized Aldi's, Lidl, Walmart's, everything. I'm concerned about the breweries, and I have spoken out. You know, ABC laws were amended by Jeff McWaters in 2012, you know, which has helped all these breweries. They don't have to have food sales like the brick-and-mortar restaurants. They're allowed to sell alcohol, and they, I've been in a couple of them, I don't drink, but I've been in a couple of them, they don't even bother to put a pretzel or a peanut there. They let people drink, they operate like a bar, and I just, I'm opposed to the flooding of our area, every empty building being a brewery. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dyer, do you have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
It's Rose Hall?
Wait.
It's Rose Hall?
Rose Hall.
You're fine.
Shannon, I apologize.
It's okay.
Shannon, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He made me do it.
That was my fault.
It's okay, it was on consent anyway, so...
All right. So I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the question, please. Ms. Crenshaw, is that all right?
By a vote of ten to zero, you approve the application.
Okay. Old Donation Episcopal Church for a conditional use permit in the Bayside Borough. We'll call the speakers, please, for Old Donation.
So the first one is Robert Randall.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all. We are coming to ask for permission to continue the growth project that we've been working on, that we've been working on for a couple of years to define some additions to our space, about 15,000 square feet of space, that we think will enable us to serve both the parish needs and the ministry, but also, just as importantly to us, all the various groups in the community that we support, including scouts, as well as a number of AA and NA groups, and various people in the community civic leagues as well meet in our place. And we've frankly gotten to the point where we fortunately have run out of room and need to do this. So we're very enthusiastically asking for your support. Thank you.
And I'd like to say...
Mr. Randall, may I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
I think you're familiar with an additional condition that we are asking to...
Yes.
Add to the application. Are you in favor of that?
Yes, absolutely. You're talking about the fence that we would build between us and our next-door neighbor that we've been discussing for some time, and we are fully committed to building a fence.
Thank you, sir.
Separate that.
Both of my children went to your preschool.
Ah, yeah. Well, thank you for sharing them with us.
And you provide a lot of wonderful things, and it's a lovely church.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting our scout troop.
Yes, that's good. Okay.
Nancy, Nancy Reyes?
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you.
It tells me to relax. I'll try.
Please do.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council, my name is Nancy Reese. My husband and I have been members of Old Donation Episcopal Church since he retired from the Navy, and we moved to Virginia Beach in 2001. You have heard that our church dates back to 1637. church dates back to sixteen thirty-seven. Adam Thurlgood, Grace Sherwood, and many other people who are important figures in the history of Virginia Beach are also important figures in the history of Old Donation. Our baptismal font was fished out of the Lynnhaven River. We are the church in church point. We have a silver patent, a plate, and a silver chalice that were gifts to us, to the congregation from Queen Anne. The history of Old Donation is entwined with the history of our city, our commonwealth, and our nation. We have been worshiping, but maybe more importantly, serving our God for almost four hundred years in this place. It is a rich history, and one that we are extremely proud of. But it is our future that excites us the most. We believe God is calling us to serve our community and our world, and we are eager to answer that call. But in order to do that to the best of our ability, we need more space. The proposed building project will provide more meeting space for community groups, as the Reverend Randall told you, like the scouts and several twelve-step programs, who use our building six days a week. It will provide more office space for our staff to effectively lead us into the next chapter of our life here in Virginia Beach. The congregation supports this project, and we hope that you will do so as well. I urge you to approve this request, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Next speaker, please.
John Hutchinson.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
My name's John Hutchinson. I'm the immediate neighbor of Old Donation Church, and to the property of forty-three fifty-seven Alphons Trail, where the church is seeking a change of conditional use for the house located there to that of religious use. My family's home was the very first house built in what has become a busy neighborhood. Around nineteen forty-seven, my parents purchased the land, which was no more than woods at the time, cleared it themselves and built the house I was raised in. My parents sold a portion of their property to Old Donation Church in the nineteen fifties for the specific purpose of building a home for the church's minister and his family. They had no intention to sell it prior to learning of the church's need for some land to build a home for their minister. The land was not on the market for sale, and they would not have sold it for any other purpose. They certainly would never have sold it if they could have foreseen what it has, what it was to become. During the eighties, the church underwent an expansion of its buildings and altered the landscape dramatically. During this project, the church was responsible for having removed the two properties' primary dividing boundary marker, which was, had been a large drainage ditch that had run the full length of our two separate properties. They did this without any warning or consultation with my family. In doing so, they eliminated what had been a very efficient means of preventing our low-lying property from flooding during periods of heavy rain. It also protected our privacy and from the encroachment issues we've endured ever since its remove, removal. In the nineties, the church's minister and family vacated that rectory house. From that point to the present, the property and house were no longer used for their original purposes understood by my family, who had provided them with that property. It became a busy meeting house for all manner of groups, ranging from Narcotics Anonymous and various other twelve-step groups, the often noisy church youth groups, all of which were completely unaware of the property bet, property lines between our property and the churches. I have addressed these issues with the church over the years, and they have made some adjustment, but it remains a clubhouse for their various activities. Now, we're informed of the plans for a new fifteen thousand square foot expansion of their buildings toward our home, as well as a repurposing of that house's originally intended purpose. My concerns with this development are based on a history of little consideration from the church for the impact of their continuing expansion on the quality of its only adjacent neighbors' lives. How will this affect our quiet neighborhoods? Noise levels, street parking considerations, drainage issues, trash containment and pickup, and finally, the value of my family's property. After discussing these concerns with the minister of ODC, the church has offered the construction of a fence at their expense to clarify our property's boundaries and to preserve our home's privacy. Considering my family's history and dealings with the church, I believe that more than a verbal agreement is necessary to ensure any such commitment. I would ask that a recorded condition be added to any approval.
Thank you very much for coming in, uh, down, sir. Appreciate it very much. Next speaker?
That's all, sir.
Would you like to rebut? Do you have the ability to rebut, if you'd like?
Hi. Very quickly, I will say that John and I have been in discussion about this for some time, and, uh, and actually, we have now written him, uh, instructions in our commitment to, uh, to build this fence, so that we can, uh, protect our boundary lines and help him, uh, be assured.
Thank you very much. Mister Jones?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Respect.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Shannon, what is...
I have a question for, for the gentleman that just spoke. Yes, thank you. Are you, are you content, sir, with the, with the condition of this fence being in writing? Are you, does this satisfy you?
I am, and I'm very happy that it has been put in writing. However, there is some, uh, issue about whose property the fence should actually be on and whose responsibility it should be, and ownership it should be. And that, um, I'm, my feeling is that it should be my family's, and that it should be on our property, so that we have control over its appearance, its upkeep, and to do whatever we want to do with it.
I, I think that's a legal question that'll have to be answered.
Okay.
I'm sure the staff will look into it and find out what they have to do in that regard.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else, counsel? Mister Jones?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Respect. I'd like to move approval for the application of Old Donation Episcopal Church for a conditional use permit, ray religious use at forty-four forty-nine North Witch Duck Road in the Bayside District, and add one condition, uh, which would be condition number four, and that being that a six-foot solid fence shall be installed along the entirety of property lines adjacent to the property located at forty-four thirty-five North Witch Duck Road. The proposed fencing shall be submitted for approval by the planning director, and all necessary permits and approvals shall be obtained before installation. So move, Mister Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any? Yes, sir.
One discussion. Should the motion also include that if legally acceptable, it's, uh, it's, the city has no, uh, because as it now reads, it has to be on their property, but I think we're trying to leave the leeway that if it's agreeable and legal, it could be located on the other person's property. I just want to make sure that our motion doesn't preclude that.
That, I don't think it precludes that. I just don't know whether we can legally enforce that, that's...
All right. I just want to make sure the staff, you know, it doesn't read it literally. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Call for the question, please.
Five vote of ten to zero, you've approved the application.
Another nice job there, Mister Vice Mayor. Stephen Lee Aronson and Marie Eaton Aronson, conditional use permit regarding outdoor recreation facility at nine thirty-seven Baha Court. Call this applicant, please.
Um, Stephen Aronson?
We welcome you tonight.
Yes, this is, this is my wife, Elaine.
We welcome you both tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you. We live at nine three seven Baha Court, which is in the, uh, neighborhood of Lagamar. Uh, this is a picture of my son. He's been playing baseball, sorry, since he's been four years old.
And he was born in Virginia Beach.
Got to be a great young man.
He's, he's now approaching the age, he's actually thirteen years old now, and we've been practicing quite a bit, because he's a one-sport athlete. He's a very gifted athlete, according to most of his coaches. Um, we've been practicing at home by using a net, um, but now he's gotten to the point that, uh, he needs something a little bigger to work with. So we decided to, uh, talk about it, my wife and I, and, and initiate the effort of getting a baseball, a temporary baseball cage for my son. Now, when I mean a temporary date baseball cage, that means that it's a cage that's not cemented. It's actually a temporary cage that you can take down in the fall. Um, so it actually would be used, uh, from the spring to the end of the fall, and then we would take it down, and then once again, he would be able to practice. It only will be used for four or five years until he actually gets into high school, because we're hoping he'll get a scholarship.
Four or five years, he'll be in college.
He'll be in college for that baseball scholarship. We understand there was some opposition to it. Um, one of the things that we wanted to let you know is that he'd only practiced maybe an hour, um, and that would be about it. Uh, we also wanted to shorten the size of the, uh, cage, um, to make sure that it wouldn't be any kind of obstacle to the neighbors that we actually have around our particular home. So that's what our cage is going to look like. Um, we're just looking for approval for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Stanley.
I do have some questions, because we have had, uh, some additional opposition that, you know, has, has sort of come to us, uh, just within the last day, and I did try to call this morning.
I know you did.
Unfortunately, I had to be over here early. I, I know that there's, you know, there's concern because of the, uh, just the, the, the name of it, I guess. But if, if we could be clear, and maybe you can put that picture back up, whoever is the magic person to make it go, to, to show what it, what it really looks like. All right. Are there any mechanical, are you using anything mechanical at all?
No, ma'am.
No. Uh, anything to make noise?
Well, a baseball bat.
And a ball.
And a ball.
A ball and a bat.
There'll be an L screen, uh, something called an L screen in there, where I'll actually be throwing the ball to my son, and he'll be batting, uh, from that L screen, not trying to hit me with it. But there's not going to be any mechanical unit where it's a baseball machine or anything of the sort. He'll just have a bat and balls to be thrown at him.
Now, of course, you can play ball in your yard now. You can pitch, you can hit, you can run, you can catch. So playing ball is not the issue. I think the issue is whether or not you can have this net there. And, and that's what I think maybe is, uh, it has some confusion. There, there are no lights. You're not adding any lights. Uh, we always look to see what you're doing to the neighborhood to make certain you're not going to be, um, doing anything that would be adverse to your neighbors, because we're concerned about that.
Right.
Do you anticipate any additional traffic? I, I know that some of the, uh, calls or the letters have indicated that maybe there might be a whole team that comes over or others. Are you thinking there would be others to come?
Which was brought up at the last meeting. I'm not a coach. This is about my son. Um, one of the, uh, participants said that maybe it would be all right to have one other kid over to, to play with him. But this is not about getting a team over there. It's about practice, my son getting better at his individual, um, batting and his individual throwing or whatever he needs to do. This is not about a team at all.
So you don't anticipate any additional traffic or any others than...
No, ma'am. And the net, uh, there was a question about what kind of net it would be. It would be the type of net that you would use, like a fishing net. It's not a chain link, uh, netting or anything like that, so it wouldn't make any kind of noise to that fact of, you know, sounding like a chain link fence.
And, uh, as far as any, any commercial use, there's, or there's no business. You're not anticipating any income from any of this.
No, ma'am.
I think the, the, the important thing is, and an important thing for the neighbors to know, is that this is only about the net, as far as, and, and maybe I just want to make sure that I'm thinking the right thing. The purpose of the net is to keep the balls from going over the fence and breaking...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any other purpose for the net?
We don't want the ball to go into other people's yards.
Damage their property.
Uh, and damage their property. So, the net is there to keep the ball inside the net.
Okay, so that's the purpose of it. And it's ten feet high?
It's ten feet high. Um, we expect to make the width a little bit smaller, because of the smaller space that we have, so it wouldn't be actually that size width. Uh, so it would actually be, be smaller. The length would actually be smaller as well, because of the space that we're allowed to have. Um, that one's about seventy feet. We don't have seventy feet, so it's going to be about forty, somewhere in that range.
Purchased it yet?
Have I purchased it? Not the poles.
Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to be clear about what you were expecting and what you were thinking to do, and also to let your neighbors know that, what you're anticipating, so.
Those poles right there would be where you would get them at Home Depot. They would be like the, uh, chain link poles that you would use on top of fencing. That's what supports the, uh, the, um, the cage itself. And as you can see, it's a trapezoid shape there, so it won't be any danger to falling over, and we plan to anchor it in as well. So, when we get some wind like we've been having, that the structure will not move at all whatsoever.
And the proposed conditions, that the batting cage shall be located and constructed in substantial conformance with the layout that we have here and the photograph that we're seeing. Uh, the use of the batting cage shall be limited to the hours between ten AM and seven PM.
Yes, ma'am.
So you couldn't use it before ten AM in the morning. You can't use it after seven PM, but you're not planning to use it all day?
No, of course not. I think, uh, I didn't want to wear in his arm out.
Okay, I was just looking at one of the, uh, letters that we had gotten today, and there was some confusion about how much it was going to be used.
Right.
The applicant shall maintain the existing six-foot-high privacy fence along the rear property line. You have a six-foot fence along the rear property line, but I think this is going to go on the side of your yard.
Yes, ma'am.
And that, I think it looked like it's a four-foot fence.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that yours, or is it your neighbor's?
It's my neighbor's.
Okay. And, let's see, somewhere in here, maybe that was taken, oh, okay, the batting cage shall be disassembled and stored from November thirtieth to March first, and during periods of inclement weather. So it would come down no later than November thirtieth and go back up no earlier in the year than March first.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you know that there's a northeaster or something coming, you're going to take it down?
Absolutely.
Or a hurricane.
I will be on him. Hurricane come in, cage goes down.
The idea for the cage is to support his batting, um, to make him a better player, especially when he's playing on travel teams and showcase teams. Um, he's a really good ball player, but like, when he, and he's a really good student as well. But like, being a good student, you have homework to do to make you a better student. The batting cage is there to make you a better ball player. You know, it's all for practicing and getting him better.
One other condition, I wanted you and, and any of your neighbors who want to speak to, to be aware of all these conditions. And then, uh, there's, will be an annual, now, this is not going to be the typical conditional use permit that we would give to a conditional use permit, and it would stay with the property. This is only a temporary sort of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, there will, there's going to be an annual review
Yes.
Of this facility, uh, based on this date. So I guess, whatever date we approve it, if we approve it, then at the end of the year, there would be a, an assessment. Uh, and if there were problems, then you may not have it anymore, or you could continue to have it, and you're saying perhaps three or four years. And of course, anytime during the time, if there is a problem with these conditions, it can be reviewed. Okay, I just wanted everybody to know, because I know some of the, the things that I've been reading and so forth, there was maybe some confusion. So, all right, well, thank you, and I...
Thank you.
May we add that one of our neighbors who wrote you a letter in opposition reached out to us just this evening, came to our house, and she spoke to us, and we clarified some things with her, and, and she's a wonderful neighbor. And she said, "Now that I've spoken to you, I understand, and I support it."
Yeah, and we're going to let you have the right to rebut.
Well, we'll, we'll hear from your neighbors.
Okay.
But I just wanted to be clear on what it is, and, and so everybody would, would know. Okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker.
I have one speaker, Tim Worst.
We welcome you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Worst. I live in Lagamar. Uh, I'm a huge sports fan, so I would, would have loved to have had one of those nets in my backyard when I was growing up. Uh, one of the neighbors has contacted me and asked me to, uh, voice their opinion on the noise level and how it's coming about there. Um, but after listening, I think that they would be in favor of an hour a day in hearing that. Um, but I think it was the noise level and the, the aluminum ball and, I'm sorry, the aluminum bat and the ball hitting that, um, at early hours, at late hours. But I think all the circumstances you put on there, I think they would agree to that hour a day. I think they would be in agreement to that.
You do say an hour a day.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's what the, is, that's not a condition, but that's what you're anticipating. It was to be about an hour a day or forty-five minutes.
I think they would be totally in favor of that.
And I think at the planning commission, there was some discussion about the type of bat, and it won't be an aluminum bat. It would, but of course, he can already play catch and bat and pitch and so forth anyway.
He can use aluminum platen his front yard, can't he?
He can use it anywhere he wants to, so...
Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
So none of these people who have contacted us today want to, to speak? All right. Well, I, I really, uh, feel that, given the situation, I know that, that it would may be a little bit visible to some folks. I think we're just looking at, the visibility seems to be the, the main concern now. And, uh, in that back corner, there will be a little bit of visibility of the, of the net above, but I don't think there will be any problem with the noise and so forth. And given the fact that it's going to be temporary with an annual review, and all of these conditions, I will move approval.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the application.
We now get item number seven, short-term rentals and as, well, we've got to get a 7A first, but I think she's left. What, Barbara Messer on 7A?
That's Planning 7 is short-term rentals. We've already done the ordinance for 7A.
I got that.
Yeah, but I mean, I think you can check them.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do 7, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. And as was, I think advertised, this is going to be deferred.
Correct.
Okay. Call the speakers, please.
Michael Argesty. I really messed that up. He's laughing.
We welcome you tonight, sir.
Agresty.
It's easier than it looks. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Conrad Agresty. I live in Croton Beach. Thank you for allowing me to speak against the zoning amendments on short-term rentals proposed by the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. The Planning Commission purports that their zoning amendments are, quote, "public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice." While I contend that they are none of these, I have seen no criteria or justification supporting such claims. Croton Beach is a residential neighborhood in every sense of the word. People gout for each other, each other's property, each other's children and pets. The streets are narrow, sidewalks are few, on-street parking is limited, there are no commercial dining activities in the immediate vicinity, thereby necessitating vacation travelers to transit our single path of ingress egress, Croton Road repeatedly during their stays. Croton neighborhood simply cannot absorb unlimited short-term rentals. If permitted unchecked, we believe that it will allow institutional investors to buy our properties, build mansions, and irrevocably alter the serenity of our community, possibly even driving residents from their home out of homeownership. Like many of my neighbors, I believe that property ownership conveys a principal right of use. However, with those rights come responsibilities to one's neighbors. The Planning Commission's proposal falls short of ensuring that those responsibilities are met or enforced, or that the rights of the permanent residents to quiet enjoyment of their properties is preserved. In response to my questions at a recent Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, I was informed that neither the Virginia Beach Police nor the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation has been engaged on how they might monitor or enforce the Planning Commission's assertions of no additional noise, no additional traffic, parking plans in middle, review, approval, et cetera. The devil is in the details. It always is. Good government calls for actions that are in the best interest of the people, can be measured, evaluated, adjusted as necessary. Going full bore into poorly thought-out, unenforceable short-term rentals allows the proverbial camel's nose under the tent from which there is no retreat. In the Navy, we had a saying, "You want a bed, you get a bed." I therefore ask that reasonable limits be established on the number of rentals allowed per year, per venue in Croton Beach.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Appreciate you coming down.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Molly Brown?
Molly, we welcome you tonight.
Good evening. I'm Molly Brown, and I agree that more time is needed to study this issue. However, after attending your workshop, I'm upset with some of the comments that were made about my residentially-zoned community of Sandbridge. I heard some of you say that you don't want other neighborhoods in Virginia Beach to become another Sandbridge. I heard you say you want to protect the communities with R-10 zoning. Please understand, my home is built on an R-10 zone lot in Sandbridge, where R stands for residential. Sandbridge zoning is no different than any other R-zone neighborhoods. Yes, we have short-term rentals, but over half of our homes are full-time residents or second homes. Please let me emphasize, because this rumor will not die, I am not against short-term rentals, but we too need to help to protect our residential community. The community of Sandbridge was incorporated in 1952 in the Prince's Anne County with covenants and restrictions that provided all lots should be used for residential purposes. With the City of Virginia Beach acquired Sandbridge from the county, it continued the residential designation by zoning it a residential district. The Comprehensive Plan has always considered Sandbridge Beach a residential community. The City of Virginia Beach created the Sandbridge Special Service Tax District, the SSD, in 1994. This SSD was created for the purpose of providing local financing for beach replenishment in Sandbridge. It was important to the Army Corps of Engineers that Sandbridge be a residential community, just as the Corps required the inclusion of the Residential North End in the Big Beach Project. This residential community in Sandbridge should be no less important now. The question must be asked, what makes Sandbridge so different from other neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, which also have short-term rentals? Nothing. Historically, Sandbridge has been a residential community by covenant, zoning, and the Comprehensive Plan. Many of us have worked hard to maintain a friendly atmosphere that welcomes new residents and visitors to our community. We are not different. We are Sandbridge. We are like all the other residentially-zoned neighborhoods in Virginia Beach. We need your help to protect the health, safety, and public welfare for residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sam Reed. And then after Mr. Reed is Donna Watson.
Ma'am, we welcome you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, Dave. Good to see you again. I'm speaking tonight as the past president of the VBCCO. I have stepped down and our new president will be speaking in a few minutes, Mr. Brad Sykes. I would just, speaking as past president and as a president of my civic league, Oceanic Gardens, real estate taxes are the backbone of our city. It's the majority of the general fund's income. All the homeowners have, you know, the right to quiet enjoyment of their properties and shouldn't have to suffer the adverse effects of event housing. And in my neighborhood, Oceanic Gardens, we had a shooting about a year and a half ago at an event housing rental. There was probably somewhere around 100 kids there. And when it broke up about 2:30 in the morning or so, there was a fight and shootout. So, and it's the noise and the trash and everything else y'all have heard about. And according to the state, the way I understand it, the General Assembly, the Senate took the House of Representatives, the House of Delegates' recommendation to turn down the amendment to the Lexington bill, and they changed that in the Senate. And basically, the way I understand it, the new bill says, and it's supposed to be signed by the governor eventually, that you guys have the right to do whatever you want here and you can put conditional use permits and everything else. It's up to y'all for the rest of the city except Sandbridge. I think the way they wrote it, they held Sandbridge whole because it's more like the Outer Banks or something. So it's up to you guys as far as what you do. I would please like to see option two, which is your own city staff's recommendation to use conditional use permits and at least try to maintain some kind of control over this thing so that it doesn't get away. And every neighborhood, according to the revenue with the taxes, almost every neighborhood in the city has had an event housing, a short-term rental in it. So it affects all the neighborhoods throughout the city of Virginia Beach. We've heard a lot about this in the CCO. A lot of folks have come to us and said, "What are y'all doing? Are you going to speak up?" It took us a while to get on track with that because of our bylaws and getting a position statement passed and all that, so, but we're here. And we'd like to see our neighborhoods remain safe and secure for our people, our neighbors, to raise their children. And they buy a home and they expect that quiet enjoyment when they purchase a home in the neighborhood of Virginia Beach. And I'd like to see that whole, you know, maintained in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Donna Watson. And after Mrs. Watson's Nancy Parker.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'm Donna Watson. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you in support of one of the alternatives that city staff had proposed to recognize and regulate short-term rentals. We came home to find our mailbox had been knocked over. Three other people who had also expressed the exact same views also had their mailboxes vandalized. To add insult to injury, three women in Sandbridge joked about this violence on next door. I hope that I don't go home to find more vandalism to my house, or God forbid, any physical violence. Please do not continue to delay action to regulate short-term rentals. The city has been dealing with this issue for almost three years. Entities, and we all know who they are, have purposely scared people to death by saying that council is going to take away their ability to rent properties for less than 30 days. Whipping people into a frenzy, which has resulted in targeted violence, is reprehensible. Instead of letting this disease of lies and mistruths continue to fester and grow for another 30 days, I will hope that you will take action to protect our neighborhoods. I have said it till I'm blue in the face, I am not opposed to short-term rentals. However, this morphing commercial enterprise, which now has tentacles throughout the city, needs to be regulated. It's up to you all to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our communities. You can protect our neighborhoods by fully implementing a 311 number to find out who the bad actors are. You can protect our neighborhoods by having zoning inspectors available on weekends. You can protect our neighborhoods by establishing a maximum safe occupancy limit that is in keeping with state code and is deemed reasonable. According to Chip Dix, a representative for the Virginia Realtors, the industry standard is two people per bedroom. Staff recommendation of two people plus four is very fair. You can protect our neighborhoods by allowing only one rental in a seven-day period. Those who want to limit for less than seven days will be able to do so. You can protect our neighborhoods by requiring a contact person available within 30 minutes. In our experiences, most of the problems occur at houses rented for three to four days or the houses are over capacity. At your workshop last week, it was very upsetting to hear comments to the effect of, "How do we avoid another Sandbridge?" It came across that Sandbridge is the poster child for a neighborhood gone bad. We are, in the sense that the city has allowed so many huge houses to sleep up to 50 people to be built without questioning them. The city needs to be more vigilant and not approve many hotels that are masquerading as single-family residences. People who intentionally mislead the city as part of their business model should not be rewarded. When we bought our house in Sandbridge, we knew that Sandbridge is and was a residential community that welcomes rentals. Residents do have rights. We have the right of peaceful and quiet enjoyment of our homes, and it's up to you all to help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Nancy Parker. After Mrs. Parker is Larry Horvath.
Nancy, we welcome you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, it's good to be here again with you on this issue. I know you're all excited about this. Members of council, my name is Nancy Parker. I am at the Beach Borough. I do not speak against the 60-day deferral, as this is a far-reaching and a community-impacting issue and deserves every single bit of our attention. I do not speak for any one neighborhood either, although hopefully you have received my comments that I sent via email to you sometime last week, my personal comments. I do have a question, though, as to what, if any, are the ground rules during this deferral period? Is there a moratorium on any more registration of short-term rentals and event houses during this period in the city? Can anyone become a short-term rental or an event house anywhere during this 60-day period? Are there any repercussions? I know that this is a difficult issue for the council, but it's also a very difficult issue for your members of your community. I wish you the best of luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. Nice to see you. Next speaker.
Larry Horvath. And then Herbert Jones.
We welcome you tonight. You're welcome.
I'm Larry Horvath. I'm with Bay Lake Civic League. I've been asked by my neighbors to come and speak to you all. I'm going to say it bluntly, we don't want any more short-term rentals in our neighborhood. We've had experience with one of them and it was pretty awful. I've got one across the street from my house. They've actually covered a third, about somewhere between a quarter and a third of the lot with concrete to allow more cars. And the other one that we have in the neighborhood is a sorry-looking affair. The flower beds are untended, the lawn gets maintained by a professional service, but it's an uncared-for-looking building. Looks terrible. We are afraid that if you don't control the proliferation of these businesses in our residential neighborhood, we're going to lose our neighborhood and we're very worried about it. I don't know how many times we can say it, but these businesses are disruptive and they are affecting everybody now, especially with Airbnb and the other online rental platforms. We, in the past, I've spoken now in front of the Planning Commission and in front of you all once already, we are a little shocked that the Planning Commission punted on this issue. And we were looking, every time I talk with my neighbors, especially in Cape Story and Chesapeake Beach and in my neighborhood, they're amazed that we have not passed ordinances to protect our neighborhoods. And at first, they're shocked and they expect that you're looking after them, and then they find out that the other people, we've been packed before with owners and operators who have a vested interest in these businesses and being able to grow them. So I'm trying to remind you that they are not the majority, the homeowners and residences who expect to live peacefully and enjoy their neighbors. Those are the majority of the voters and that's the business of what you're being tasked to do as our representatives, is to protect the majority of us. We are looking for, we don't want them, but if we have to have them, we're asking that we have no more than one per week. We have strong ordinances that prevent these things from overtaking our neighborhood and becoming conspicuous. No more than two bedrooms persons per bedroom. We, at least one parking lot per bedroom and a 24/7 personal responsible party to address issues. Don't dump this on the police. And the other thing we're asking for is a conditional use permit. If it's not warranted and justified here, it's not warranted or justified anywhere in a residential neighborhood. Now, other cities have passed ordinances. This is nothing new. They've done things like maybe made it by right to have one or two short-term rentals. And then, if you want to have a business, then you get a conditional use permit so that at least your neighbors are aware that you've made this move and are asking for this to happen. Conditional use permits are grandfathered. They travel with the deed, whether you've applied and gotten a conditional use permit, it conveys with the deed. So there were about a dozen people last time that said that they would affect their sales price because it wasn't conveyable. Somebody should have corrected them. It is conveyable. It is passed on and sticks with the property, with the deed. I know you've heard these arguments before and I've come tonight just to make them one again, once more, and to explain them. Please protect our neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Herbert Jones. And after Mr. Jones is Brad Sykes.
We welcome you, sir.
I probably could just say amen to what's been said before, but I won't. I spoke before you on March 6th, when I told you of my support for the city staff's Alternative 2 proposal. That proposal would allow all of the existing structures in Sandbridge which commercialize their houses to be grandfathered, about 44% of the 1,300-plus structures in the single-family neighborhood. It suggested also that all new applications for semi-commercial properties go through the conditional use permit in order to protect the 56% that are not currently commercial. There was also a set of regulations in Alternative 2 which would apply to all to maintain some kind of monitoring of behavior of the part-time residents, those with no skin in the game. Since that presentation, two significant events have happened. First, our reps in Richmond, Delegate Knight and Senator Distef, have decided that they know best how to manage our city's land use. They have challenged your ability to manage the land use through the cup. At least, they have said, you can't use a cup in one neighborhood, but can in all others if you wish. Interesting concept. Kind of sounds like spot zoning. Not sure if the governor has signed it yet, but maybe. The other significant event since that presentation on March 6th was that my wife and I came home following that evening about 9:15. Sometime after that, some of my Sandbridge neighbors decided that our property should be vandalized. And it was. So the bottom line today, we still believe that the city staff's Alternative 2 is the fairest solution to the problem of creeping- the fairest solution to the problem of creeping commercialization in single-family residential neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Brad Sykes.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I had the privilege of stepping up to be president of VBCCO when Sam Reed stepped down.
We congratulate you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if that's good or bad.
That's the right word, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
With condolences.
We voted on and approved a position statement, and I will read as follows. Whereas the mission of the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations, the VBCCO, is to advocate on behalf of the neighborhoods of Virginia Beach, whereas the city of Virginia Beach recognizes short-term rentals, less than 30 days continuous, of a dwelling in a residential neighborhood as a different use of a dwelling compared to occupancy by the owner. Long-term renters, as evidenced by the imposition of the transient occupancy tax on short-term rentals, whereas the city zoning ordinance is silent on short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods, and whereas short-term rentals presents problems as residential neighbors. Be it resolved that the VBCCO urges the city to amend the existing zoning ordinances to address short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods by holding the owner or owners, owner-representatives, and rental agencies accountable for the actions of the renters. Be it also resolved that any zoning ordinance of short-term rentals pursued by the city should adhere to the following: parking, number of occupants per bedroom, rental outhouses, porta-potties, et cetera, fireworks, neighborhood disturbances, excessive trash and trash removal. It is considered opinion of the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations that these amendments or additions to existing zoning ordinance will promote the health and safety of the residents and renters, ensure the peaceful enjoyment of the neighborhoods by residents and renters, and protect the properties and property values of the residential neighborhoods to the benefit of the neighborhoods and the city as a whole. It is also the opinion of said organizations that these amendments will promote equality and fairness within the rental industry in holding short-term rentals to the same standards as the hotels, motel industry. We operate in the exact same manner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Paula Speaker, sir.
Thank you very much. That will take us to appointments, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have a question, though. Mr. Mayor, if I could, just a question. Because Ms. Parker mentioned it, and I thought it was a good one for the people watching, is in the 60 days, I thought that was an excellent question that she posed, during the 60 days, what does that mean? I don't think we adopted any moratorium, so I think the answer would be it's business as usual, but I thought since she posed it, it was a legitimate question the city attorney could share with us, what is in place? If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Five minutes.
Yes, Mr. Moss. As we have stated, currently, the zoning ordinance does not permit short-term rentals. At the same time, because there have been short-term rentals historically within the city, there has not been enforcement action taken. I would expect that during this 60-day period, that status quo would remain. The registration ordinance continues to be on the books, and people who are going to operate should register, but that doesn't give you zoning approval. And if this council ultimately, when this council ultimately passes something, the staff will at that point begin enforcing it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
As a point of order, do we need to vote on the deferral for 60 days?
I think you would.
Okay. I have a motion. Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'll make my comments during the discussion unless you want to go ahead.
Okay, that'd be great. Have a motion for deferral, please.
So moved.
Second.
It is for 60 days, as I recall.
Yeah.
Correct.
Now, discussion.
Now we get to discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope that this 60-day deferral doesn't mean that we aren't going to talk about it until 60 days.
No.
Because then we aren't going to be any more ready to adopt anything than we are tonight. I hope that the 60 days is going to be a time, if we decide that we have to wait 60 days, that we are coming to grips with the situation that we've been talking about now for pretty close to three years. And I think during the 60 days, there's probably going to be people making reservations for the summer and so forth, and we really have to face up to the fact that this is an issue that we've got to deal with and we can't keep putting off. And so I hope it means that we're going to come to grips with those things that everybody can agree on. I was kind of hoping that we could maybe do it incrementally, that maybe we didn't have to wait all this time. Last week, we kind of agreed that we were pretty much expecting that there would have to be a responsible party named for each short-term rental with a person who could respond within 30 minutes if there were complaints, and that we would be letting it be known to the public that 311 was a way to call if they had complaints, and that we could start coming up with these things that are acceptable. So I hope if we vote for this 60-day deferral, it means that we're going to be working on it during the 60 days and not just putting it off again.
Other comments? Yes.
I think Barbara is correct. I think, because I know the mayor and the vice mayor set the agenda, I do think we can set, I know it's budget time, but this is what we can set time aside, and I think we can address and decide.
I think we should that the...
I think we did. I'm just trying to so the public knows that we have committed to add this to our workshop agenda items and what things we can do and what things we can't do. I just want to make sure the listening public knows that we're not waiting for the 60th day and say, oop.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Bobby?
Yeah, just a thought. I think if I recall some comments made, that maybe a lot of the code enforcement wasn't done as it should have been in the past, and maybe if we can just make sure that code enforcement, you know, is compliant to any, you know, needs that, you know, the people have with what's going on currently, that might help abate the situation.
Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to comment on what Ms. Henley said. And I, for one, have received a lot of calls from people, particularly in my district, Bayside District, and I've committed to them that I will come forward with a proposal on short-term rentals that I hope will be acceptable to both them and to the council. But I personally am going to make an effort to do that, and I'm sure everybody else here at the DIAS will be trying to work with the community also.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments? I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you have deferred the short-term rentals ordinances for 60 days.
Well, now move to appointments. Sir, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Beaches and Waterways Advisory Commission Nick Gallegos to the Personnel Board Sharon Brown and Patricia West, and as alternate, Daniel DeRoges. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, but I'm sure the clerk will spell it right.
Yes, sir.
And Ed Jones, I believe, is the other one.
You got that one?
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
Got a lot of support out here, Mr. Vice Mayor.
To the Stormwater Appeals Board, Barry Frankenfield, Steve Motley, Tanya Alger, John Fowler, and William Jennings. To the Virginia Beach Towing Advisory Board, Scott Shubmel.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Here and done, I'll call for the question, please.
Mr. Davenport, may I have your vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My vote, 10 to 0, you have appointed those read by the Vice Mayor.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Thank you all very much for a very fine meeting. We'll adjourn.